I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for being here for the official session of the Goldendale City Council for July 3rd, 2023. I'll go ahead and call roll. Marilyn Mulling.
Here.
Andy Hall.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Dave Jones.
Here.
Steve Johnson.
Here.
Now, Filberto has said he's got an appointment or something, he couldn't be here. I haven't heard anything yet from, uh, from Lauren, but normally work is what keeps him away, so we need a motion note for these two addresses.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded to excuse Filberto Ontiveros and Lauren Mager from attending this city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is closed, closed public comment. This is just for agenda item, comments only, it's a limited three minutes. I don't think, do we have anybody on line for public comment? I don't see anybody here raising their hand. We'll move on then to public hearing and open a public hearing on the six-year street plan. Call for comments on the six-year street plan. Did you, did you make a presentation on the first panel?
I can just, yeah, it's pretty simple. Every year legislative body of any city or town is required to adopt a six-year street improvement plan pursuant to a public hearing. There, we went over this at the last meeting. There's been some additions to it, some modifications on it, and we will be using this adopted plan within the next month and a half to apply for TIP fundings for next year.
Question?
Yes.
Do we have to take these in order?
No, no. When we evaluate based on the criteria of the TIP application that year, which ones of these will fit that category, Lori, the best and have the best option of us getting some type of funding. And we are going to be seeking chips, the Henry construction funds for both for next year.
All right. Excellent. If there aren't any further comments or questions, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the agenda. We have a proposal to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda for the July 3rd, 2023 city council session. Are there other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We don't have presentations scheduled tonight. We'll go to department reports, and we'll start with the Goldendale Police Department.
Okay.
As you know, we had ordered a new car last year. It finally got done. It's at the, it's being used now. We did redesign our logo, our stripes for that. You ever pass that around? I think it's a more professional look for the city. We also got a new tent that came in for community days, and it actually got delivered before community days. So I was kind of, I was sweating it, I was like, get it here, you know, and they, they delivered on it, so check it out too. You'll see the community days, you'll see that the different events we have, the back school bash, all those school different activities they have out there that I think represents the city well. Just one of the goals I had was to kind of make the police department a little bit more professional and along those lines, and so thanks for working with Pat to find some more money to, I'd like to redo the rest of the cars as funds allow, so they all match the new one. You know, buying new cars all the time with this logo, all the new ones kind of will have this design on them, and so got a bid coming out, so probably next council, you know, more pricing on that, so we have a couple cars a year at least. Right now, we have three different designs for our cars. We have a black and white subdued, Johnson's here, and we had the next one, Reg's here, and then we waited a couple years during COVID, we haven't had a new car, so this is our first new design from that, and so I think it's just, along with the B C, you know, and so I mean, good outreach for the community.
Looks very nice.
Looks really good. Other than that, we're excited to keep plucking along. Fourth of July's coming up, we're going to do our due diligence to try and keep fireworks going off tonight. You know, as that goes, it's like chasing stray cats, and so we're more educating the public, trying to keep fires and work with the fire department, know we'll have more on the firework stuff, but you know, dry season, so we're urging people to be extra careful, so. That's all we got.
Thanks, chief. Fire chief, go on.
Uh, yeah, so on fireworks, so fireworks are allowed only on the 4th of July, and I believe it's, I'm not sure the start time, but I know the end time is at 12:00 midnight. And we will have some vehicles out, pricing brush trucks, helping the police department and being ready if, if something happens. Last year was one of our busier years. We ended up having four calls, four fire calls during the night of the 4th of July. One was actually a structured fire, which took up a little bit of our time on that, so. But we were pretty quick on it because we did have some engines and different things driving around, so. Also, we'll be out at the demolition derby helping with that, and I believe we'll be leaving up there somewhere around 3:00, and they're predicting it to be done 10, 9 to 10 is what they, what they are predicting. And then, of course, after that is the fireworks show up there at the fairgrounds.
Is that scheduled to happen?
I believe so. I'm really not into, I'm helping Rural 7 with this.
I think that kind of fireworks, I don't know whether it's higher, maybe that they do it, but I notice that's one of the, because it's professional, it seems like it's treated a little bit differently. It must be the control of the fireworks themselves.
Yes, it is. I'm, I'm not 100% up on it, but they, you know, different powder charges and different things like that will send, send them higher or lower, whatever they've got, so, yeah. That's all we got.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it. Both departments meet out tomorrow evening, that's going to help a lot, just the nature of it. Now, Pat for Goldendale Public Works Department.
Um, so just to, I'm going to make this a little bit quick. So, update on streetlights. So, we've had some challenges of streetlights we had, we're sitting in Portland, they, but they showed up, and the company that we bought from's never ran into this before because they're considering the same as cell phones, so they had a $16,000 import duty on them. And so we tried to get that resolved. You only have five days when it comes to the board to resolve it, because we're not paying that $16,000, because that's not part of our agreement. They were working with them, trying to resolve the issue. It's done. Back to China, and now it's back in the U.S. again, and this all was in a two-week period. I mean, I was surprised, you know, they made it back to China back in less than four days on a ship. So it's back in the U.S. The company is, as soon as we get notice, then the company is going to kind of check and then pay the duty so that we can get it delivered to our door here. The other is, we did get the ASR grant for $200,000. The contract's been signed and submitted back to them for that funding, and other than that, I've been, I've been working on drafting some ordinances for this Thursday for P.M. ordinance committee meeting.
Oh, this Thursday?
What's your day? And the crew, I, I have to talk to Doug, but I'm pretty sure they're done with all their crack ceiling at this point. They were not here today. They wanted to work Friday of last week and take the day off, so we allowed, I allowed them to do that, as far as we did at this.
Sure. Thanks, Pat. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on any of these reports? Now, we'll go on to council business, and the first item is a request to install a pressure, a private pressure sewer, and present the information on that.
Yeah, this is at 812 Northwest or Northeast Third Street. This gentleman has had quite some difficulties there. The building has an old septic system on it. They, they use it as their home, and it's failed, and he's been working with the county for over a year to try and replace it and keep, county keeps telling them that they're not going to give him another permit to put another one on the property for various reasons. So what they would like to do is, there's a map in here, and you can kind of see on this, this picture here, what they want to do is run down the edge of our right of way, clear back from our sidewalk and towards the property lines with a pressure sewer line and come up closer to the intersection up there to Broadway, and then come across and tie in the sewer main. I am not opposed to that with the conditions that when city sewer goes through there, they would be responsible for maintaining that sewer line, but when city sewer is available through there, that they are required to tie in within five years. And the other thing is that we talked, I talked to him about as a whole harmless agreement, because this will not show up as a public utility in a utility locate number, so if somebody's out there digging and hitting it, it will be 100% their responsibilities and not the city's to either work a deal with whoever hit it, which, you know, or their responsibility to market, so it's, it's just a request from them, so.
So question, so what?
Is, is the city responsible for making sure there is hookups for the people along the road like that? I mean, why isn't their sewer through there?
Because the city's never put any sewer in there.
Okay.
No. The city can put sewer, usually sewer hardware is doing development. I'm assuming this is a fairly old part of the community down there. Basically, how that road runs, it's kind of got a dip in the middle of it, and that whole land out there does. So, it is a pipeline that goes up right there, is that correct? So, right around the pipeline, there actually needs to be, to pick up that area out there, there's going to have to be a, what's called sewer lift station there and everything gravity to that at some point as the property develops. Usually developers, when they go in there to develop a property, they install that and then meet, to our standards, and we take it over. You know, there, but there's nothing preventing from the city I'm looking at for funding to try to improve that sewer system now through there either.
Is there any way that we could try to help that process with them? I just, I-
Right now, money's really tight in sewer because of the sewer plant project.
Yeah.
But-
I just think it's just kind of unfair for the, the city not to help with it. I mean, it's, I mean, yeah, they run an old system and whatnot, but to have them be able to hook into the system, they have to pay for everything, and then to say, oh, it's none our responsibility.
Well, the, the city, well, I, he's not looking at it that way. I mean, he understands some rules, but-
Yeah.
The, where the, what is that, what's the motel?
Ponderosa.
Ponderosa. So the city has a, well, it used to have a sewer line that went almost within 20 feet of that property, right, through that parking lot of the Ponderosa there. But for some reason, the city only, they, they constructed it, but they only put a 20-year life expectancy on that easement right of way and that use of that, and that's gone away probably 30 years ago. So, and we tried, the city, since I've been here, I've tried working with the property owner and Ponderosa to allow him to cross his property. They actually made a verbal handshake agreement that if this gentleman had surveyed all four corner, you know, all four corners and had it pegged at his expense, then the owner of Ponderosa would allow him to cross, and he did that, and then the owner redigned on his offer. So there, there's been some challenges down there. This is, like I said, this is started before I started here, and it's, I, I feel it's bad for the gentleman. He's really had some difficulty trying to get this resolved.
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, I remember where the Ponderosa, that's where, that's where the old ACs used to be, and that was in the county.
That's a good time.
Right, property.
And well, that was, is going to be my question, what does the county got to do with this?
The county has nothing to do with it.
Well, they're all, the fingerprints are all over this state, but-
They denied his, uh-
Well, oh, you mean, yeah. So, in Washington State, we, cities do not control septic systems. That's, that's controlled by Clickitat County Health Department through Washington State, not the city on septic systems. We have nothing to do with those, whether, so what the, the rule of thumb is, is if you're within 500 feet of a public system, you are required to connect into it at your expense. That's what the law says. He's just outside that 500-foot run, so, you know, we, I don't, we could force him to say, well, you can go in there and put all that infrastructure in, but that's putting one heck of a burden on one small property owner. I know the gentleman that's across the street, they, they've been in and talked to us several times about dividing that property up in the future, but there's no deadline on what that is, and he understands at that time that there's going to have to be a sewer system put in there as well. There seems to be a lot of interest down in that area, but no real movement at this point.
Well, there isn't. Well, Riley owns a big chunk.
It's Riley, yeah.
Right there along with the crack, you know, they're just setting up it, but it's ripe for development one of these days, and there's also open, open ground on the south side. You know, I'm surprised that there is no city sewn down through there, you know? I mean, we reconstructed that road not that long ago. It's a street, all brand new. I mean, reconstructed it.
Yeah. When you get to the, the west end, before you get to the corner by the swimming pool there, those houses there are on city sewer, but their city sewer is behind them, like in an alleyway, but it's an easement road. There's an, actually, I think there is a, but an alleyway that goes down there and dead ends, and that's where the sewer line is for about, oh, six or, five or six of those houses along there.
Okay, and that would be the same?
It would be more difficult for him to do because he would have to go across other property owners' property and get them all to agree to give him an easement.
Right.
To get to that, yeah.
Or the city will eventually put a sewer main down there.
We don't, we would have to obtain an easement too at that time to do it. I think it would be better to go out into the street. There's plenty of road behind the curb lines on both sides to put in a, a pressure sewer main there, and that's really what needs to go in.
Right, right. That's interesting. Well, okay, then, is relative to the development up here on the north side of town, take a street now, off of Northwest High Street, you've got private road that goes back in there, there are a well, and there are septic. So the county apparently has jurisdiction over their septic tanks?
Yes, I mean, the septic tanks are owned by the property owner. What they have authority over is if the septic tank fails or the, you know, or the drain field fails, the county can make the decision whether it can be repaired or not, or is there enough land to replace the drain field with a new drain field in a different location on the property, and in this case, they determined that there's not a sufficient area for, based on the soil's type, for it to percolate correctly.
Well, typically, when there is a development, there is usually an agreement made, like that situation there, where they can have their, their well and their drain fields, but when they fail, they have to connect to city services.
So what I'm kind of asking for tonight is, is a consensus to go ahead and work with this gentleman on an agreement. I didn't want to draft up an agreement and bring it to council and spend all that time doing that and then it be turned down, so if it's something you guys are interested in pursuing, I can get something drafted up. If not, I'll just let all the answers, no, we're not going to do that.
Well, I think we should definitely work with them. The one thing I was hoping for some clarification on, because he talked to me and stuff, he used to deliver bread to us, but, so he pays for the, he pays for the, almost under the street, he pays for the whole line, right? And then that becomes our responsibility after that because it's under-
No, this would be private all the way, and the portion he, it's not in the street, it's behind the curb line.
Behind the curb?
Yeah, it's actually, there, there's a really wide right of way through there. It's way back behind the sidewalk, and it's only going to be probably inch and a quarter, inch and a half piping. It, it's just, he's got to put in a little, so it's a little mini lift stations you buy for residents. His house will flow to that, and then it'll have a little float that tells it to turn on, I guess we'll, and we'll pump it out to the city mainline.
Okay.
So it'll be just like you have in a gravity feed, that's just, his is a pressure right system going to the city.
Just as he's got to run it a lot of the way, I don't know.
Well, he's got to run it quite a ways, yes. Usually we wouldn't bring this, but since he's paralleling, because most people, you know, when you, they build a house, it's their responsibility to get from their house to the mainline. We don't usually allow people to parallel the right of way with sewer lines for legitimate reasons and run 300 feet of, or 400 or 500 feet worth of pipe in a right of way, but this gentleman's in a situation, he really doesn't have a choice, and, you know, and he can't afford by himself to put all that infrastructure in right now. I, I think it's, you know, he, you know, we could require him to do that, to tie in and do a late cover's agreement so he can reverse his shares, but those late cover's agreements are, I think, wasteful, are only a minimum of 20 years, and the likelihood of what it's going to cost him to put that late cover's agreement together legally and then get it recorded, he'd be lucky if he even broke even on that, getting his money back.
Well, I think we should give consensus for it myself.
I agree to that. Also, there could be future developments along there too, maybe someday. I mean, yeah, I mean, there's some empty lots there.
And any future developments would have to tie into his-
Any more, no. Any, in the future, we'll put it in there if other future developments come in, where there's that many property owners engaged now, where that cost can be split between them, they're going to have to extend the mainline out and, and do it the right way. We don't want to leave that in there forever. This is just to help one of your citizens out, I mean, he's in a tight spot, it's been that way for over a year, and I think it's a reasonable solution to get it, it fixed now instead of having a, you know, a public health issue about the property with raw sewage on the ground, so.
I love work.
You're just calling for-
I just, basically consensus right now, and I'll draw something, agree that back up, and then bring it back to you.
Sounds good.
Do we have consensus?
For?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Complicated issue. Next item on the agenda is a request to change parking on Railroad Avenue. And Pat will present the-
Yeah, so Rural 7 has approached us, and this is, this is something we would need a consensus on too, to start working with Rural 7. They're getting ready to build a new facility over there. Obviously, they want to modify some of the parking, off-street parking requirements so they have quicker response coming out and a safe distance to turn when they're approaching now onto Railroad. If the city council doesn't have an issue with us, working with them and coming back with some recommended changes, because I want to talk to our fire chief and chief of police both on parking issues out there, and Doug as well, on how we can resolve those issues, and I, I think it's a good solution for everybody, you know, they're going to have a, they're, they're building that out on the railroad side, isn't that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
The north side?
The railroad street side. So they're going to be on the south side of that property they own.
The north side of Railroad, I guess.
Yeah, the north side of Railroad, south side of the property.
It's actually over, it's bricks.
Yeah.
That's where they are now.
They're in the bricks of Railroad.
The front of the building is going to be on Railroad.
Yeah, they're going to pull out.
Oh, yeah.
And they need some, the city to work with them on some parking ordinances or parking signs along there, so to prevent people from parking in that area.
Can I say something, Pat?
Yeah.
It was, it was brought to my attention by Tony is that even when those trucks park there, some of them get pretty close to that stop sign, and it's pretty hard to see a real. I mean, we have the same issue at our fire station, but it, it is one of those things that would help them out.
Right. I noticed that too, but seeing like I heard that the city allowed the trucks to park there one time.
Exactly. We, we do at this point, that it's only truck rail, that's about the only place in Goldendale other than-
Okay.
At the gas stations that you can park semis, because all the other roads that aren't commercial, so.
Well, is there room between, well, Grand Street and then before you get to Dabrowski's Gate? Is there room there for parking? Is it, do we eliminate that too, or just from?
Yeah, the whole, the whole railroad right now is, you can park your semi trucks on the railroad.
Yeah, right.
They're, they're not asking to eliminate it all. They're just asking that maybe to move back a safe distance so they have line of sight.
Oh, yeah.
And when they're pulling in and out of there and backing back into their facility, that there's plenty of room there to make a turn and have clear line of sight for-
So we just need to put some signs up, whatever, in the future, okay?
And paint some curves.
In other words, we could establish a section of that, no parking on that site.
Yes.
Right.
For line of sight.
Well, I was completely blown away when they, one mentioned, one of those semi trailers, is there 724?
Yeah, it's, it's used for storage.
Well, that's-
Oh, really?
Yes, yes.
I know, it stayed there.
It's not even-
It's not even used for-
It's up to a tractor.
Yeah.
That's-
What do you think of that, Mike?
Well, right now, that's the only part of the ordinance where you can't have a hook trailer, and so that, the, the solution, I mean, we've had a lot of complaints with semi trucks with the reefer going nonstop because there's houses right next door, and so we get a lot of those, but that is designated for the trucks, so taking that away would relieve that problem, but it creates the other problem is where these semis, they come and go, you know, long haulers, they're here for two, three days, they can't park their semi truck down on, you know, burden, something due, and we have a lot of, you know, calls for those, we handle gas complaints come in, but, you know, so that might be something for you guys to start thinking about, where are these trucks going to park with a big 20 or 40-foot trailer? Then they can leave it overnight with, you know.
Line of sight impacts any kind of vehicle.
Well, doesn't the city own, just on the other side, it gets a grant, sort of, to start that, the next street down?
I think so, where all the asphalt, now that-
That's, that's-
That's, but they sold that.
Yeah, that was, it just happened to do it.
We sold that, huh?
Yeah, we sold that.
Well, we start looking to something like that to accommodate, you know, the semis. It used to be, before they put it in the RV park out here, that was a green spot, so. So, and we need...
I don't have any ideas right now.
Well, no, but I...
But we didn't, no, we shouldn't like, we shouldn't consider it, definitely.
You should look at our map. Okay, that's what they're going to fix. So are you calling for consensus or just informing or...
Yeah, just kind of informing both and the consensus. But it sounds like pretty much getting the consensus that they want to put that in.
That's our decision. The resolutions, Pat, then will be presented to the council.
I think we should definitely work with whatever the Rural Seven needs to be able to do their job there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to look into that storage unit that starts on the street. I mean, we don't, we don't allow that anywhere, you know. Exactly. That's what I personally, yeah. Shane Jordan's, now we're glad we have that one. Absolutely done. That was amazing. Did we accomplish everything you wanted on that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. The next item is resolution. And this is resolution number 730. And this has to do with adopting a six-year street plan that you approved under item D of the public hearing. So this calls for a motion on the resolution. You see it there in your packet. The resolution will adopt that six-year street plan.
Well, if there's any, no more comments, Mayor ISO moved to adopt the resolution number 730 for 2023 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for City Streets.
Second?
Very good. Thank you. Move to adopt resolution number 730 for the 2023 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for City Streets. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is report of officers, and we'll begin with Andy.
I just want to wish everyone a happy fourth. Be safe out there. Also, like that car actually looks really, really good, that new graphic on there. I had to do a double take. Wait, that's a good old car. But yeah, it looked really good, so.
Ellie?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Well, yeah, I just wanted to wish everybody Happy Independence Day tomorrow. It sure is nice to be free. No better way to celebrate your freedom than go to the demolition derby and the fireworks show up at the fairgrounds. I mean, only in America, right? Anyways, Community Day's coming up this weekend. It's going to be really good. It might be the best Community Days yet. I say that every year. We'll have scavenger hunt back again. Don't forget about that. And yeah, we'll see everybody out there. Thank you.
Steve?
Just want to reiterate to everybody, Happy Fourth of July, Happy Safe Fourth of July. And don't take your eyes off the ball. Remember what it's about, what we are celebrating, is freedoms. We are still at war. It's a cultural war. We are at war. Let's all pay attention. Anyway, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Not mine.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment to the people of Golden Dale on how good of a job they've done on cutting their grass and cleaning up the streets and their yards. And I really, they've done a great job. We still need to do a little more, but I still want to commend the people who've done a good job so far. Yeah, we've really got potential fire danger and people understand this, so I think they're really working at it.
Yeah, people seem to have been careful.
Yes, they are.
Trying to do it. On the mayor's comments, there aren't many countries that have freedom. We've had it the longest and the most, and there's always a struggle to keep it because of adversaries and other things. It's a precious right that we have that just does not exist in a lot of other countries. And it's quite a drastic difference where you live and one of those other countries. But the fourth has a lot of meaning, and that's the main one, freedom. And I hope everybody will stay safe on your fireworks as well as your driving. Watch out for old guys tottering across the street, stuff like that. There's several of us here that could be in that category. But please stay safe. Golden Dale's having a great job on keeping our Fourth of July safe and with good activities. So I think I'm looking forward to what all can happen tomorrow. And next, Pat for city administrator.
I don't have any more to add tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. We're hoping now for public comment, anybody wishing to have any kind of public comment. Roger?
Yes, sir. I just hope that if you have a digital version of a picture of the new design of the police car, you can send it to me so we can get it in the Sentinel because I think people are going to look at this snazzy new look. And I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger.
I don't think it's supposed to do the color.
Yes. Hopefully nobody...
I'll talk a little about that, yeah.
Good. Hopefully nobody will discover it if they weren't giving a ticket. What was my shit paycheck? It won't work that way. With that, we'll call for adjournment, motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn. Second?
And move to second to adjourn the city council for July 23rd, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
I really don't recall for any opposed. Thanks, everyone. Very good.